Ready? You want to say the pledge? Great. Thank you. If you can please find your seats, and if there's a fire marshal in the house, you need to leave.[43.82][43.82](Laughter). Thank you, Eddie. I think you're needed outside right away. Appreciate you all being here. There's a lot going on this evening, and thank you very much. I'd like to call the City Council Regular Meeting to order on Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. At this time, we'd like to invite United Fellowship Church Pastor Yolanda Ewing up for the invocation, after which we'll be led into Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Mayor Chappadose. All rise, please.
I'm sorry. Holy God, my Father, your precious son, Jesus Christ, thank you for the many blessings for our local community has experienced. I pray for those who are in the office that governs this community and county that make wise and godly decisions which are always in the best interest of our community. I am glad that we have the freedom to speak up and vote. I pray for them and their families to be blessed by you, God, and those who are in law enforcements. Please bless them in their line of duty so that they might protect those of us who have placed our trust in them. God, please bless these men and women in the city government, the mayor's office, the commission, all officials, newly elected officials, and certainly those who put themselves in arms' way like law enforcements, firefighters, and EMS workers. I pray for all those who live in the city of Maricopa, the families, the youth, the children. Righteous Father, you know that we are all so connected by family, friendship, fellowship, faith, so we Christians should be united in praying for our local communities and those who have not yet trusted in Christ. I pray for all of the educational institutions, local businesses in our city. Father God, please protect our citizens in our community and those that surround our neighbors. Help us to protect our own neighbors and to watch out for the interests of others. For those of us who have trusted in you, oh God, we know that you are our protector, our defender, and ultimately, we have no need to fear what anyone can do to us, according to Matthew 10:23, Hebrews 13 and 6. Help us to depend on you in all circumstances to know that nothing happens outside of your divine will in our lives because it's always in our best interest, Romans 8 and 28. And so that you, so we thank you for giving us these men and women an authority for our protection, for I know that they are in full authority over us. I pray for the future and the growth of opportunities will impact our community. I pray for solutions regarding challenges that we face so we can have a safe and peaceful place to live. I believe by faith and by your grace, Father, that all these prayers will be answered according to your will. In Jesus' strong name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you, Pastor Ewing. We appreciate it. Thank you, Vice Mayor. That'll take us to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi.
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chappadose.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you. We are going to change the program just a little bit tonight in order to accommodate everyone who's here. If you look down on item five here, we have a fire penning tonight, and because of the way we do the swearing-in of new council members and the changeover, we want to make sure that we, make sure that everyone has a chance to be here and see everything. So with that, we'd like to invite Brady Lefler, Chief Lefler, to come on up, and we're going to start with the fire ceremony penning. Take it away, Chief.
Distinguished Mayor, Honorable Counsel, we have, or I have, the honor to introduce our three newest promoted personnel. If I could have Captain Brad Potassie, Captain Joshua Eads, and Engineer Hensel, please come forward. Right up front. Each of these individuals was put through a very vigorous test, testing process, of which I'm sure they'll all agree was, was not easy. We've instituted a new testing policy which is, is very robust, and I'm going to start with Captain Brad Potassie. Brad Potassie came on the department December 1st of 2006. He's been a paramedic for nine years, and I'm going to put my glasses on because I can't read it.[381.28][381.28](Laughter). He has a Master of Public Policy and Administration from Northwest University in Chicago. He is currently assigned to ladder 571A shift. His career passions are complex incident management, crisis and organizational communications, teaching, critical incident peer support. He, he established our public information officer program and has trained multiple people throughout the city. He is a nationally certified Type 1 public information officer. He goes out on Type 1 incidents all over the country, predominantly the Southwest. He is a member, again, of the Southwest Area Type 1 Incident Management Team. He is an adjunct instructor for the Arizona Department of Emergency Management Military Affairs and nationally recognized public information officer who teaches across the country, and he is chairman on multiple committees that have improved the department. We are very, very proud of him. Thank you. In just a moment, after I go through the remaining personnel, his wife Christina and daughter Ava will come up for the penning. Next is Captain Joshua Eads. He is our newest captain, and his current position is he, well, he was an engineer on ladder 571 for the past two years, and he is currently the captain in the lead pool that you are subbing for somebody currently. His achievements and committees, he has been EMT of the Year in 2014. He holds the Employee Excellence Award in 2017. He is our Fire Pals, which is Elementary School Safety Education Program Coordinator for, from 2011 to 2017, and he is the Wildland Team Coordinator. He has fire science and paramedic as his degree background. He is the oldest of five brothers and sisters, married with two boys. Josh loves time with his family, sports, hunting, camping, and traveling. Josh started his career in the fire service at age 20 when he was hired by the U.S. Forest Service to work on Wildland Fire Crew. While working at the Forest Service for four years, he also volunteered many hours at the local Tri-City Fire Department. After the Forest Service, Josh worked full-time for Tri-City for two years, but he had his sights on working for the fast-growing, progressive, new city of Maricopa. Josh is very thankful and incredibly honored to accept the promotion to captain. He has 17 family members here for his penning.[560.79][560.79](Laughter). His wife Stephanie will provide the penning. And last but certainly not least, we have Engineer Justin Hensel. He was hired, he was the first person I hired when I came here as the interim fire chief. He was hired on 10/21/13, approximately a month after I got here. He is currently the acting engineer/paramedic on Engine 575C shift. He is now permanent engineer. He is the Department EMS Pharmacological Program Manager, Department of the MSA, which is our breathing apparatus, and a G1 SCBA technician. He is the Emergency Medical Services Division Lead CQIQA Member, and he is ACLS, PALS, and CPR certified instructor, and child passenger car seat technician. His education consists of Associates of Applied Science Degree in Emergency Response Operations, Fire Operations, Associates of Applied Science Degree in Emergency Response Operations, Paramedicine, and Fire Officer Leadership Certificate of Completion. He is certified US DOT Emergency Vehicle Operator and certified Pro-Board Pumping Apparatus Operator. He's been married to Kelly Hensel for 10 years, and they have a six-year-old son named Tristan, and his son Tristan will be doing the penning. If I could have Christina and daughter Ava. Stephanie Eads and son Tristan, please come forward. If I could have all the family members come up for just one quick picture, that would be fantastic. All 17 of you for Josh.
There we go. I'm live now. And no, Councilmember Manfredi, I am not singing or tap dancing. That's our city manager's job. So obviously, thank you very much. Congratulations to our firefighters that have recently been promoted. It's a wonderful opportunity. Tonight is also another special night in which we say goodbye to some of the folks that have decided to step down, or not won reelection, or whatever the case might be. In this case, Vice Mayor Chappadose has decided not to rerun, and so there's a new person that will also be sworn in, and so we're very excited for all of you to be here and participate with us. So with that, I received a phone call yesterday, I think it was, and Vice Mayor Chappadose said, "So how would you be if I decided to have an unconventional going away?" And, you know, I was thinking about that for a second, and I thought, "Well, you know, what am I going to say to her? Am I going to fire her? I mean, come on. All right, go for it." So come on down, Vice Mayor. The time is yours. Just real fast, Peg is one of the most, she's one of the kindest people that I know. You may not always agree with her, but you know where she stands, and probably more importantly, she's always thinking of other people in one fashion or another. But like Peg, if you know Peg at all, you know that she's one of the most organized people you'll ever meet. And so, of course, to go away, she has a PowerPoint presentation for you all tonight.[1052.41][1052.41](Laughter). You think I'm kidding, but she's not. Take it away.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, everybody. Just the essentials, some notes, and those of you who know me know, I'll probably go through this whole box before I'm done. But I, I wanted to do something a little bit different. For those of you who may have been around for a few years, I was originally appointed to council back in November of 2012, and that night, as Vanessa will attest to, it took about four hours. So I think it's only fair that it takes me about four hours to get off of council.[1082.58][1082.58](Laughter). But no, I, I wanted to leave you with a little bit of humor, and also, this is my opportunity to thank some people that I couldn't have done this job without. So in the spirit of David Letterman, I'm going to present the top 10 takeaways that I have learned being on council. So number 10. Maybe. Not working. Ava, help. There we go. To me, this was an important distinction that I wanted to make from day one, and I even did it during my campaigning. To me, there's a distinct difference between being a politician and a public servant. My background, for those of you who don't know me, is in law enforcement, so being a public servant was something I was used to for more than 10 years, and that's what I wanted to bring to council. We all are inundated with politics nowadays, and sometimes it's more than we want to, want to cope with, but it was very important to me to be a public servant. And when I ran, I ran under the guise of, "You're not hiring a politician or a council member. You're hiring somebody who's going to work for you for four years." That's what I wanted to do. Number nine. You don't know what you don't know. There's no school, there's no program, there's no book, there's no internet course, there's no way to learn this job well unless you do this job. And I've talked to so many people, say, "Well, you know, I'm thinking of running for council, but I just don't have the time." It's probably a good enough reason not to run. This is the most exhausting part-time job with full-time expectations for less than minimum wage that I've ever known in my life. But, but every minute has been worth it. Not knowing what you don't know, we've got some amazing people here. I've got a vast resource of knowledge and experiences and resources that I couldn't have done this job without. Number eight. Something I learned very quickly, governance is like an iceberg. You guys, the public, they see what happens on the surface, the meetings, the committee meetings, the programs, the activities, but I guarantee you that all that stuff that you see come to fruition, even tonight's meeting, there's been people in this room that have worked behind the scenes tirelessly, doing research, doing reading, getting things ready, pressing uniforms, inviting family out, coordinating the whole thing. So this is something that everybody who gets into politics or any kind of governance learns very quickly. Is the three minutes up already? Okay. Number seven. The meetings are the easiest part of this job. I know in this last year, I did over 350 meetings, and that was just one year, but it's, it's important part of the job, but this is by far the easiest part of the job. Number six. It's not about me, it's about my city. You know, you've seen us in meetings, you've seen us debate issues, as long as we never lose sight of the fact that whatever we do is in the best interest of our residents, our businesses, our staff, our public safety people, and, you know, ourselves. We're each other's council members too, which is something I never lost sight of. So it's, it's important to remember that this is not about any one individual, it's about Maricopa. Which brings me to number five. This is something that Christian and I share in terms of values, service before self. It's not always easy. Henry and I have had also many discussions about this. If we're at a meeting, if we're at a program or an activity, that means we're not home. That means we're not having dinner with family. That means we're not somewhere else. It's a choice that we make consciously when we decide to run, but sometimes it's, you start at 7 o'clock in the morning, you don't get home till 10 o'clock at night. So, not always easy. But again, it's about building something positive, whether it's a legacy, a building, building history here. I, I really think this is a unique opportunity that we have in Maricopa. We're a brand-new city. We get to be history, but we get to make history. How cool is that? That's really kind of neat. You know, building relationships, building networks. I've had so many phenomenal opportunities in the six years I've been on council, and I walk away with a wealth of people that I can call on for expertise, for a friendly smile, "Hey, let's go have a beverage, let's hang out, I'll see them at events," all the time. It's also a job that you can't do alone, and as I said earlier, I've got a wealth of resources around me. All those boxes up on top represent all the city departments. I've worked with a number of different people. In the six years I've been here, I've hired five city managers with my council members, the same lady, twice. So it's been an interesting journey. Our admins, now, family, so.
Make you an honorable firefighter. And this is for life. This is not for tonight.
All right.
All right. And it says, "Presented to Peg Chappadose in appreciation of your tireless efforts to progress the City of Maricopa Fire Department. We are forever in your debt, Local 4561."
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Does this mean I have to work 48 hours straight?
Forty-eight hours straight. So Vice Mayor, thank you, O'Shea. Appreciate it. Vice Mayor, will you come over here for a second? We have a little gift for you. Come on over. Where you want to stand? Stand right there. So you, this is a little gift basket full of some of the things I know you love. One of the things that Vice Mayor Chappadose is always famous for is, we're having a meeting show, he says to bring snacks, so we brought some snacks, and I, I know that you were jealous the other night at the Maricopa event, and so I wanted to, to get you something that you could feel like you're part of the gang. And so if you'd open this here for a second, here, I'll hold this. Take that out. Take that out. What do you think that is? No, better. Meowee catness. So there's your ugly sweater. So this is from all of us. And Don, would you come up for a minute? So probably the most important thing for everyone to realize is that Vice Mayor Chappadose spends a lot of time here at City Hall with me and others and the council members, and she's going to be at home a lot more, Don, and I just wanted to let you know that, in case you forgot, that something is always her way. So why don't you, why don't you lift this off here? Yeah, you get on that side. All right, there we go. You got to lift it off really carefully. There you go. It's always Chappadose, though. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's grab a picture. So now we're going to move to the next part of our program. Again, thank you for your service to the city, Vice Mayor. We appreciate it. And we're going to move to the swearing-in portion, at which point Judge Riggs, would you please come forward, and we'll turn the mic over to you, and however the order you would like to proceed in.
All right, Mr. Manfredi. I, Vincent Manfredi.
I, Vincent Manfredi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
Of the city of Maricopa.
Of the city of Maricopa.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Mr. Wade. If you'll come right here, and we can get on either side of you. Raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. Please repeat after me. I, Henry Wade.
I, Henry Wade.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
Of the City of Maricopa.
Of the City of Maricopa.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Mr. Vic D'Ello. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rich Vitello.
I, Rich Vitello.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them.
And...
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
Of the City of Maricopa.
City of Maricopa.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Councilmember Vic D'Ello, will you take your seat? I'd like to invite you to join us in the foyer there for a small reception and welcome your city council again for the next two years. Congratulations.